Meetings called to order. Regularly scheduled meetings for which the date, time, and location is set forth in the annual notice of meetings adopted by the Waldorf Planning Board at the reorganization meeting of January 2023. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, said annual notice has been filed with the borough clerk, a copy posted in the vestibule of the Waldorf Administration Building, and copies transmitted within seven days after adoption to the official newspapers of the borough as designated by the governing body, to wit the Bargain Record and the Ridgewood News. Secretary, please call the rules.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Vermando?
Here.
Mayor DeGiano?
Here.
Mr. Shetland?
Here.
Mr. Orvich?
Here.
Mr. Fasilago?
Here.
Mr. Misselwick?
Here.
Mr. Wagnett? Ms. Bedlamenti?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Here.
Mr. Brabord?
Here.
Okay, we could all rise for a moment of silence for our and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the point in the meeting where anybody who has business before the board that this business does not appear on tonight's agenda is welcome to come forward. Seeing no one. Next item up, approval of the minutes of the January 4th, 2023 meeting. Motion to accept as printed, motion by Joe, second by Adele. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Applications. First application tonight is Peters, SR-583, 152 Franklin Turnpike. Please come forward. You. Yes, all these years, all these years.
Hi, folks. Are you both going to be testifying?
Yes.
Okay. Both of you raise your right hand. Fall after me, I swear. I swear my testimony shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of God. Please state your name, spell your last for the record. Thank you very much. Please be seated. All right. First thing that we have to ask you, can you just be certain you are not forming an LLC, corporate entity, nothing, right? Just the two of you on it.
That's it.
Okay, that's fine then. The reason I ask is Jersey law requires any business entity to be represented by council. And I also make sure that I'm not looking at that. All right. Tell us what you want to do.
We're basically looking to sublease and own investment property and run personal training and one-on-one yoga in a small group.
Mm-hmm. All right. How how big a group is small group?
Four to six.
And other than yourselves, there'll be no employees? Property is 152 Franklin Turnpike, correct?
Correct.
The most type corporation building.
Yes.
Lot 3.01, lot 101. It's in a C2 commercial zone. The amount of space you're taking is 3,500 square feet. And you're going to call it all-in training.
Correct.
Is that a trade name that you've registered?
Not yet.
No, okay. But again, all-in training is not going to be an entity unto itself, correct?
Correct.
It's just going to be an A.
Correct.
And onsite, you're going to have mats, dumbbells, yoga mats, nothing flammable?
No.
No fluids?
No.
Hours of operation. You've put down Monday to Friday, 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Sunday, 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Closed on Saturday, correct? I'm sorry?
Says Will Barry on the.
I saw that. I was getting that.
Sorry.
Don't mind us.
You skipped over.
I didn't skip over anything. I was circling back.
Circle over.
All right, thank you. All right, just so you understand, what goes into the resolution becomes a limitation on your operation. So if you foresee in a year that you'd want to be open seven days, or you'd want to say, hey, we can do this from 5:00 AM all the way to 9:00 PM, you don't have to fill those hours, but that becomes your envelope for working. Do you wish to change your hours of operation or your days of operation?
No.
No, you're good with what you got? Okay. Now, we get to the aggregating point of the evening. You're not putting up any signs?
No.
Don't need them. And you've given us parking flat in addition to your statement that there are 92 spaces there, of which you've been given eight. You need to talk to your landlord, and it shouldn't be a problem, but believe it or not, with 3,500 square feet, you're actually required to have 18 parking spaces, and yes, I know it's insane, but that's what our statute says. It's one space for every 200 square feet or part thereof. And again, chairman will correct me if my math is wrong, but I came up with 17 and a half, or 18. Now, I also looked at the parking allocation that you were given. As far as you know, what you've put down is complete, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got Madison Concepts, which is the kennel, we've got School of Rock, we've got Carter Carter Pumps, and we've got Osfit. And.
Also missing two others.
We're missing two others. However, once again, I'm getting that. That totals up, again, the chairman will always check my math, totals up to 68, which means that add your eight, now we're up to 76. With 92 left and you needing 10 more, that still gives us a cushion. Therefore, what you really need to do is get the landlord to allocate to you 18, so that we stay within the bounds of the of the statute. If you'd wanted to come in here and say, we only need eight, that's cool, but then we have a whole different conversation on whether we can, whether the board can approve this with technically insufficient parking. Now, from what you've described, eight will probably do it, and there's not going to be a problem. But you just need to know that technically, you're required to have 18 spaces, okay? And I did look at the flat and verify that there are, the last face shown is number 92. I didn't look to see if there were missing numbers. I figure somebody, somebody like an engineering degree here would do that. Anyway, I think those are my questions for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Couple of questions regarding the tenants that are in the building. You guys are taking up the space that used to be Room Industrial? That's according to the application.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's the space that's behind the Madison Door Kennels, correct?
Yes.
All right, and that's next to the arena fencing.
It's it's the same place as arena.
So you're sharing it with the arena?
They would sublease it to us. They only operate in the afternoons and the evening. I'm only operating in the morning, early afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the reason for mornings only.
Yeah.
When it's not marked and there's nothing saying it.
He also.
Mm-hmm.
What's name?
Is it Frank?
Yo.
This Carter Pump's still there, or are they still there?
Uh, they go by the name of Prestige.
Okay, it's the same company?
Yeah, they're still there.
Okay.
Jimmy and I were out there doing some fire prevention stuff the other day. We checked a lot of that. I might have considered.
Minor technicality, the address for Most Type is 150. I think they choose to do 152 for mailing purposes, but the block and lot for Most Type is 150 Franklin Turnpike.
Okay, you will amend the application to show that?
Because if you go by block and lot, it will show up as 150 Franklin Turnpike.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I didn't have any further questions. Any of the board members have any? This one's pretty straightforward. It's sharing a space more or less the same, well, it is the same footprint, so. Excuse me, they would be sharing the parking, is that, is it confirmed for this?
There's no blanking on it.
Consequential, not consequential. Complementary?
Coincidental? Complementary, I think it is.
Complementary use, so I I don't see any reason that we would have pulled enough this application. You have a motion to have the board attorney draw up a resolution, motion by Moore, second by Stanton. Secretary, call the rules.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Vermando?
Yes.
Mayor DeGiano?
Yes.
Mr. Orvich?
Yes.
Mr. Fasilago?
Yes.
Mr. Misselwick?
Yes.
Ms. Bedlamenti?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Brabord?
Yes.
Well, with that, you're approved.
Thank you.
The deal is, the formal resolution will be presented and approved at our next meeting, which is March 1st. Technically, you're not really there until the written resolution is approved and 45 days have passed thereafter for people to make objections. Practical matter, it doesn't often happen, but we have to tell you that it can. So if you made an enemy somewhere, who knows? But otherwise, if you ask, if you contact Mr. Sinclair, you'll be able to get a letter that says that you're going in to set things up in advance of getting your resolution, which will coincide with your occupancy.
Also, Cliff?
Yeah.
You do need to contact the building department because you do have to file for certificate of occupancy and also for fire prevention. Okay, thank you.
As for Joe. All right, when I do the share, share use.
All righty. Welcome to Waldorf.
Thank you. Waldorf.
Next application, Caccielli, SR-584, 62 Franklin Turnpike.
Counsel, give me just a moment, please. Hearings?
Yes, my name is, and I keep my voice up, it's strained right now. Unfortunately, if anybody finds it difficult to hear me, just raise your hand, I'll be happy to go ahead another time. My name's Michael Sculli, S-C-U-L-L-Y. I'm an attorney in Hackensack. I have offices at 20 Court Street in Hackensack, Postman Courthouse, and I represent the applicant in this matter. Seated beside me is Ms. Petroselli. She's the principal of an entity that proposes to operate a beauty parlor operation in town.
Okay, Ms. Petroselli, would you please raise your right hand? You start a testimony about you issued the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of God? Please state your names, spell your last for the record.
Laura Petroselli, E.T., all of the C.C.E.L.L.I.
All right, if you can, by all means, you can do the questioning, or if you need to rest, we're good.
Hold the mic closer to you, please.
Of course, thank you very much. Laura, what's the name of the entity that you're going to operate here in town, you propose to operate in town, your beauty parlor business?
The name is Laura Scully Salon, and it's Laura Scully LLC.
L-O-R-A-C-E-L-L-I?
Two words?
Yes.
Thank you. And Laura, where do you live?
I live at 112 Post Avenue, North Horn.
What type of business do you propose to operate?
A hair salon.
Have you operated any hair salons in the past?
Yes, up until September 30th, I was located at 39 Godwin Ave. in Ridgewood. I had that for five years.
And you attempt to, you desire to move your operation to Waldorf, can you explain why?
It's a better town than Ridgewood, who knows that?
Well, well, I have a history here. My husband, we've been dating since 16, and he grew up in Waldorf. And my sister-in-law's live here, brother-in-law, and my son's in Ridgewood, and I love Waldorf.
Tell me the size of the operation that you plan to have in Waldorf, if the application's granted?
It's just me right now. When I moved out of the space, everybody kind of scattered a little bit. I don't know if it's temporary, but I had an assistant and I had another hairdresser. So right now, I'm going in with just me. I hope to have an assistant eventually, and hopefully I can share as well.
Now, what type of setup will it be in terms of chairs, sinks, seats, waiting area, et cetera?
It's a small business. I did well in this small, so I'll have three operating stations. I believe my husband drew a diagram, and then two hairs for shampoo.
Now, with respect to the operation of the business, do you handle any toxic or environmentally sensitive chemicals, or do you use any in the operation of your business?
No.
Okay, and in terms of parking, what type of volume do you expect to take place and connects with the ordinary course of your business on an average day?
My business is operated by appointment only, so I'll do one person possibly, in between one person maybe, if it's a color client, maybe there for like another one or two hours, a haircut maybe 45 minutes.
At the beginning, you're going to.
Pass through.
In the beginning, you're going to operate yourself individually, and you hoping that out of one or two people? And in your business, you make appointments, or does it walk in, or is it a combination of the two?
It's by appointment.
Okay, and in terms of parking, do you expect that any congestion or parking issue would exist?
I don't, and I've I've visited the space three times, and I rode around the street, and I saw the signs, and I should note that we open at 10 o'clock except for Saturdays. I mean, there's always a case where you might come and go with your client. The intentionally, we open at 10, and I do want to amend that because I think I wrote 10 to 5.
Actually, you didn't. You didn't write anything.
Oh, really?
It just says 35 hours varies.
Oh, okay, it does vary. So it's kind of a tricky question, but when I heard you ask the other applicants, I would like to extend that because like Thursdays are late night, I don't know, what is late night here in Waldorf? Is it always Thursdays? Is there like a late night?
Every night.
Any night.
So it's usually been Thursdays, but like I have to be flexible with my clients, especially after COVID, so like I will stay sometimes on Tuesday night or Wednesday night, so it does, it definitely varies.
So what's the outside? What's the latest? 10?
The latest you intend to work?
Oh, 9. Try to be out by 9.
Okay, so call it 9, and we call it 10 to start?
Yes, except on Saturdays, you start at 9.
Okay, so.
Just to give yourself some pressure, maybe do you want to say 9 o'clock as a start point? That doesn't require you to open at 9 o'clock, but in the event that develops an aid.
Maybe we should, maybe we should.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then there are instances on our, because it's our only late night, where sometimes people are stuck at work and they get in by 6:30, 7, and I don't want to turn them away. Sometimes I am past 9.
As long as you're not, any, as long as you're not scheduling for 11 or 12 o'clock.
No, sometimes it just goes over.
If it's going to carry over, that's not a big deal. If it's always happening, then you need to think about it.
Now, if you take into consideration that you will not be able to have you or your staff, if you get an assistant or a staff, have access to onsite parking.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
You understand that? Okay, and when you say you surveyed the surrounding parking facilities, et cetera, and you're comfortable with the idea that this isn't going to cause either a crush for you or your associates, or for the surrounding neighboring properties, you feel that parking is going to be not an issue?
I think it's, no, I think it's.
Where do you anticipate people parking?
Well, I saw my Columbia Bank, I could guess, hybrid, it was like two hours, and then.
And both sides of the street.
No, then the other side was a loading zone until 8 to 10 AM, so that's a non-issue. We're talking about one or two parks.
Yeah.
Then around the block is permit only at the activity at 10 AM. So I think that'll be good, and on weekends, on 9 AM, there's a free lot all the way by the train station. My clients, who used to walk through the block, they had to walk. They had to drive around and walk, look for spaces, so you know, it's free, and they don't mind walking.
So that's no longer going to be an issue?
I don't think it'll be an issue.
Very good. You have anything else you want to tell the panel about the contemplated business, or about your operations, or your entry to Waldorf?
I sure do. I've been making that space in that quantum so beautiful. I have had the salon in, I'm going to try, in Ridgewood, and I won two awards for my business, my window, from the Art Council of Ridgewood. I had an unfortunate situation with my landlord, he someone booked the building, and so I had to get out, so I've been working temporarily at another space, and I'll be definitely in town, people will come here, spend money here, you know, everybody, the clients that I've told that I'm looking here were happy, they liked the Italian beer, what about more kinds, like Italian Viara, Italian Market, you know, it's a great one, it's kind of a work, but I feel like it's almost has the same vibe.
Okay, thank you. If you have nothing else to ask to add, then you can answer any questions at the panel number.
All right. Ma'am, let me just clarify. You showed five days of operation, but testified, I thought, to six, because you added Saturday.
Oh, I'm always Saturday, just not Sunday or Monday.
Okay, no Sunday or Monday, thank you. Just to scribble that.
Okay.
God, that's. Look at this, do I know?
It all depends, for a price, I like some fancy.
He goes to one more.
Give me a break. This is a tough room. Okay.
Lympholically impaired, so I can't.
Tuesday through Saturday, and we're going to go nine to nine. Number of employees?
Just name right now.
Don't tell me right now.
Oh.
Tell me what you're going to have, because again, it becomes a limitation. So if you say you're going to have three, if you're going to have one washer and one cutter and a receptionist in addition to you, that's three employees.
Be up to this.
And you don't have to have, is the point, but you're creating an opening for it.
And if you say a number that is exceeded, say that you say two, and then you have two other people, the business is going very well, and you want ahead of this, you'd have to return to make an application to revise and amend, so be consider.
We love seeing you, but we don't really want you to have to come here.
Yeah, well, what I hope to create, and what I did create in Ridgewood too, was lights and sheds. So I had the younger girls want to work later hours, they want to sleep later, so they would come at like 2 to 9, or even one or two, and then once the families, the girl had the family, she could start early, and like you might create a little bit of kids.
Of course, so.
You want to say four?
What was the, what was the heaviest you had at the overlap?
Yes.
I think I would like to say four.
Okay, that's fine.
I would love to have three other people besides me.
Actually, here's, here's the dirty little secret. You now could have four other people plus your company, because you're the owner, you're not an employee.
Okay, good.
So we'll say four. All right, what else do I have to check? Okay, your signage will comply to our incredibly complex sign laws?
Are they?
Not to us.
I don't know the sign laws. Can't look like Vegas. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no neon.
I have, what's his name, his, he's in Milam Park, and if I have a sign, I told him before I passed, I needed to help.
All right, when he fuls a firm, that's, there has to be a sketch, so.
Okay.
All right. Technically, we've got a big problem here, because it has no off-street parking. That being said, that's what it's been historically, so when that happens, the board really needs to accept the fact that businesses have to operate, because if you don't let them operate, then the property becomes completely useless. So again, you're going to have to be cognizant of where your people are parking and what the ordinance says in terms of on-street parking in each of the places, so you're not constantly getting calls from police saying, you know.
That's exactly.
Yeah, that's why I made myself familiar.
Yeah.
And I called the police station and asked them to determine the signs.
Okay, great, wonderful. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman?
What would be the requirement to park based on sort of.
Uh, sign two. It would basically be four.
And Joe, has, have you had any complaints from anybody in parking related to that facility?
We have a men's barbershop around the corner, so they would seem to be operating perfectly fine.
Yeah, you have the barber shop, you have the sand shop, and then that was a cleaners, which.
Correct.
You haven't got anybody complaining about that?
No.
Well, the thing with cleaner is they're in and out much quicker.
It's a building where it's been there for God knows how long without any parking, so unfortunately, you know, we can't force anyone to create parking spaces where it's physically not possible.
I mean, if you wanted to take a shot at it, you might be able to see if Rite Aid will enter into some sort of agreement with your parking. I have no idea if they would or not. I'm just over checking to make sure there's no answer for this use.
Well, he's doing that, I got a question. The sketch shows a basement. Do you have basement for your lease, or is that just on here for information purposes?
I think it's just for information. I don't know.
What's that?
Or any kind of.
Yeah.
Or any kind of?
Just, just for purpose of the record, that's, uh, the applicant's husband, Mr. Petroselli Franklin Petroselli, who's made the statements that have been reported, although he hasn't been sworn. Do you wish him to be sworn, of course, he will.
Luckily, I didn't hear the statements.
Did the state, do you, does the state know that you closed down your other place? You opened it before?
Yeah.
You have to let the state know, they have to come out and accept it.
Yes, that's, I didn't even type.
No man's.
Come on, answer it.
Yes, and then?
Just let the state have to know that you closed down one.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, you used to be a cross street fund hopeful?
Yeah.
I, I came to your place and opened it up.
No, so, what do you mean?
I'm, I was, I'm an inspector for the state and I opened up their facility and door. You had to have a guy coming in instead. You had a pretty winner.
Yeah, but for the Board of Beauty Culture?
Yeah, your board, that's all.
Yeah, but are you on the Board of Beauty Culture?
I, I used to.
Oh, I don't know that.
I can't with an old man. A young guy and an old man.
Now you're that guy.
I'm still there, you're not, I'm not that guy.
Oh, my God. Listen, I tried calling them so many times, you know, that I answered the phone terribly.
They're not working.
What?
They're not working.
They're all home, so.
If you need to get any-
We're working.
I'll give, I'll give you my-
We know what that means.
I'll give you my, my phone number for me and I can get you anything.
Thanks.
Off the record. Did you, because I answered my phone recorder.
Okay, any other board members have any questions?
I do, uh.
Yes.
Will there be any manicures?
No.
There's no place to get the nails on here.
Joe, you had something?
Uh, because this used to be two different uses, as an office and then, uh, a dry cleaning. I would imagine you're going to be doing some retrofitting, plumbing, to set up your sinks and everything else, okay? So you will require permits for that. Um, unfortunately, one other aspect that no one thinks about is that because it is being a change of use, is the current bathroom an ADA adap-, uh, bathroom?
A handicap?
Correct.
Yes.
No.
You may have to enlarge on that bathroom to become a handicap accessible bathroom.
How do we know if we do?
I'm telling you, you do.
You do, I don't think it's possible. It is not possible, it's, it's, it's tiny, I mean, it could be, you know, I wasn't determined because of that reason, because it can be made pretty, but it's, it's really, really small.
Well, that's a conversation for, for building department and you.
You'll take it up there?
Me. At the building department, so this isn't a, you know, place right now, this is just a planning board, but I'm just giving you a heads up.
Then you need to finalize that before you finalize it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if you open a new, um, my previous building, uh, did have a handicap bathroom, or going forward, do any new buildings have to have like any accessibility?
When there is a change of use for a business, uh, under rehabilitation subcode, which is the part of the state regulations, um, one has to come up with certain requirements, and a bathroom is one of them.
We'll deal with that separately.
Okay.
Thank you, but no heads up.
Any, any further questions? Okay, um, motion to have the Board Attorney draw up a resolution, motion by John, second by Adele. Uh, Attorney, please roll the roll. Yes.
Mr. Remondo?
Yes.
Mayor Jay Denham?
Yes.
Mr. Orde?
Yes.
Mr. Fisilakal?
Yes.
Mr. Nisselwick?
Yes.
Mr. Delamendi?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. DeBoer?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for you.
Thank you very much.
And just like our, just like the prior applicant, you can certainly go to the building department and ask for a letter in advance of, um, getting your formal resolution, so that you can get to work, get for, you know, you need to get professionals in to look at what you're going to have to do.
Right. And, um, can I get the C.O. application tonight?
No, you can't get it tonight, but you can get it, uh, at the building department when you go.
Need a letter from?
Yeah.
Eight thirty, two four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back to Waldorf.
Thank you.
Next item up, old business, we don't have anything. Unless somebody has something that didn't make it to the agenda.
Nobody still know?
Uh, new business, approval of the resolution of the Board Professionals. Need a, uh, motion to accept the resolution as printed, motion by Adele, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good on that, Cliff?
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to, do I, roll call?
Nah, voiceful, carry.
And then we have, uh, a letter from John. John's going to go, play in the sandbox, huh?
No, you, it's fine.
Yeah, if you have to go.
Alright, I'm, uh, scheduled to avoid a gaway for six months, starting March twelfth. I'll be back September eighteenth, I believe it is. Stay in Camp Earring and Camp Arachon, doing, you know, the during ranges, and pleasure about ten miles from the project board. Uh, it's, it's, uh, sleeping with the campers, but I'm just.
Who did you, uh, activate?
Uh, okay, well, anyway.
Still pending on medical, uh, clearance, but.
You had deployed creatures, right?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, alright. I'm trying to, okay, so we have the, the letter from, letter from John, now that, uh, does that require any kind of, um, ultimates? It's just a notification, right?
We're not accepting it.
Well, what, what we're doing is, we're accepting his excuse for missing six weeks in case.
Are you taking your wife with you?
No, she's gonna have a party. She's gonna, it's like eight hours difference.
So we'll see you at the March meetings.
Uh, yes.
Okay, alright, very good. Um, anything, any other new business, we have anything, Mr. Merrick?
Yeah, at the February fourteenth meeting that we're going to be having downstairs, council meeting, we're going to pass a resolution that we are going to be doing away, just like then. We're going to have the administrator take care of it.
Mm-hmm.
We spoke to the attorney, we spoke to Joe, we spoke to the administrator, and every town's doing it. We save people aggravation coming here, we save people money, and we become more friendly towns with the community. And once we do, once we vote on it, uh, then it'll come through your review, and then we back up. Long time thinking about it, long time reviewing stuff, we spoke with other towns, the attorneys. I think the right thing to, for residents. Plus, Joe doesn't care about the burden on you. It's not that you're going to get more money, but.
Okay, you have any other, uh, any other new business?
That's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Motion by John, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.